Before you pass the resolution, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like they even have that information. Because they don't know how much money they're going to award us.
She asked for a certain amount, okay? But we got this amount, whatever that we have here. And I'm, and, and I started off when I said I seconded it, that I'm not going to stop this. I started off saying that, I'm not going to hold it up. I was just saying that there are things that I would like to see happen when we get these resolutions. It's not about the changing, it's not about anything. It's like that, uh, you, the residents out here wants to know what's going on and how to explain it. If I'm the chair of, of a, of certain particular committee, I'm supposed to be able to sit up here and explain it. And I don't need the, the, the law director to do it for me. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for all you all did put. Uh, I got the motion on tape, I want to go ahead and go for the vote. You can call the roll, please.
Counselor Allen Martin.
Yay.
Counselor Thomas.
Yay.
Counselor Brown.
Yay.
Counselor Vice President King.
Yay.
Counselor Vice President, or sorry, President Weaver.
Yay.
More information when she moves.
Now, as remarked, the press is public, three minutes.
Oh my, I gotta get started now. This piece of legislation, you should be cognizant of, streets is your, your responsibility to recommend the streets, uh, the streets of passways, or where the signage is down, it's your responsibility. It's not the school's responsibility. You are responsible for the kids when they hit the street. It is the city responsibility. They are responsible for them long as they are on the property of the school. It is your responsibility. And then for you not to know, every council up here should have gotten this piece of information or whatever, and to write your proposal and send it to the, uh, the, the, the Department of Transportation as to what street and what, uh, where the signage is down or whatever the passway. That is the city's responsibility, not the, the Department of Transportation coming in here and looking to see where, uh, this is supposed, supposed to be. It is your responsibility to make those recommendations. And the money that is allocated, you asked the question. Any money that is allocated and specifically the state or the federal government mandates, you follow the mandates, what, any money that you're getting from the state or the department, uh, how that money is to be spent and what it's to be spent on. If it's only for this earmarked for this, that's the only thing it can be spent on, whether you use it all or not. That is how the city operates or government operates. Now, I, let me turn from now, I hope I made it clear to you or whatever. It is your responsibility, not the mayor or whatever. You are the council, you're the one that have the authorized authority or what have you. And you're the one that prepared the legislation and you're to carry it out. So, have said that, let me turn to something else. I was at a symposium this, uh, past week in reference to, uh, the sewers. And they're saying that they have required the property. This, I have not heard anything, I have not heard any legislation prepared or whatever, authorizing them to buy any property or monies coming into the city. I want somebody to tell me how much did they pay for the property they are indicating they are going to put all these sites on in our city. And if this council continue to sit up here and authorize for our city to turn into a dump or what have you, that's what it is. And they're talking about green space, we got green spaces all over the city with houses that you're tearing down. The green spaces, what in the devil is green spaces gonna do for the city? It's gonna drive us out of the city because we won't be able to pay the taxes. You need to be doing the redevelopment. And that's what you should be doing here to bring up the tax basis in the city. So, that's what needs to be done here, uh, opposed to just going around giving it to nonprofit organizations or whatever. Doesn't generate any revenue for the city. We need something that's going to generate revenue, to keep everything a functionable here, a, a, a functionable city. So, you, you, you're leading right into the, the mayor's hands in regards of, uh, trying to annex our city to Cleveland. You are sitting here doing that. If he can't bring something to the table and make recommendations from this council, this council must authorize. We want to see some development here. We get all this money to tear down our city, raise houses and stuff. We want money in here to rehab our city.
We forgot who's supposed to be in charge here. We forgot that. We forgot that. We're council. We direct the mayor. The mayor doesn't direct council. We forgot that. So, are we starting a new year with the same, one, two, three? We shouldn't. You stepped in, lead us right. There's no such thing as you asking him to sign. He has to ask y'all to sign.
That's right.
We got a problem with property that's been torn down from the Lakeview side of Euclid. And far as I know, somebody going to jail over this one. We've put past mayors in jail. We put our, uh, local speakers in jail. And I'd hate to see some of us sitting here going to jail because it's an illegal operation that y'all doing. And somebody signing the paperwork, it's gonna come. Uh, not to jump off what I was in the middle of, but our water rates that we plan for the city of East Cleveland has been higher. We're going from, from twenty-five to thirty-five to thirty-seven. Also into this phone call of community people in here. We're supposed to have trash cans, that's not even here. Just like Cleveland, the phone calls was heard between us, we're supposed to have trash cans. So, where are they?
Where's the money at? Where the money at?
We're paying for it, we're not getting it. So, refuse charge, every person in here, even our elderly, they give them a rate of fourteen seventy-five. So, where, where's our trash cans? Uh, I'm gonna leave room for everybody else. Y'all go ahead. Bye.
And then the thirteen sixty-seven charview. I, um, what's going on here? She shouldn't even have nothing to do with it. You know, just everybody here been living in the city for so long. I know Martin now, and I know you know. The house on Inspector. No, service, service inspector, that's his job. He should have been here telling you, he should have had those papers telling y'all with the people coming in, what they're gonna do. He should have been telling you how much this is gonna cost. Where your inspectors at? That's not her job. All this, when you had, uh, the, uh, the service department, he had everything down, making his report. You happen to have a man in here making a report about the service. Where my brother at? There he goes. He's the only one come up here, volunteer. So, that's your problem. If you had your service department up here, he would tell you everything. Am I right? Now, the other problem is about these hoop houses. I didn't ask some of you counts about the hoop houses, nobody know nothing about the hoop houses. They don't even, they, they putting, they putting these hoop houses on land, don't belong to them. Hang on, I'm gonna say.
I think it's good that, um, that there's a special purpose grant. And I'm happy that you said that there's been some familiarity of it being here prior to in two thousand twelve. So, that's a good thing. Um, as long as there's no properties being transferred or no repayments asked because it's a grant. I think it's a great idea because any money towards the good can be utilized as long as you have sec on how it's manipulated and however. I think that you all would do good if you all, um, reinstate your CAC, your Citizen Advisory Committee, where, uh, each one of you all have ten residents who can help you all navigate through some of this research and bring back answers. Use us as a think tank, use the citizens here. Let us help you guys. You're not here by yourself, we're here with you. I just want you all to know that we can make this happen, you know? Ain't nothing that we're not aware of. I'm the president for the East Cleveland Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to help organize when we start doing cleanups in the city. We're gonna make the city better. We don't have to worry about somebody's taking over now, we run our city. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of talk going, but we're gonna do this work. So, I think it's great that there's a special purpose grant. I would like to identify if you all can get the, the guidelines for it. We can help you all navigate through it, do the research on it. We can call, uh, the Department of Transportation, have them bring someone in. You know, it don't have to be at this meeting, it could be at a meeting, so that we can get the understanding. And we can move forward on it. It's nothing deep. It's not that deep. It's just, you, you're receiving money, and there's a guideline to it. And then you identify with the school board and such and how it's gonna happen. Let's keep the movement. Thank you all.
Dr. Patricia, we'll help you out eighteen ninety-four Farmington. I wish I had known when I spoke before the vote was taken and before the discussion that this was about the Safe Routes to School program. I've sat in on meetings with the Board of Health, and the Cairo County Board of Health has had extensive meetings with the schools about the Safe Routes to School, um, program. This is something that is familiar. And again, I haven't been, I was on early discussions with the Board of Health, but I have not been, um, with every meeting and every detail about the current discussion. But the, uh, the Board of Health and the superintendent and her designees have had extensive discussions about the Safe Routes to School program. And I have felt completely comfortable with that. The second thing I'd like to say is about the sewer district pro, um, program. And what the city is going to get out of it is a contribution to our clean water. When the retention basins are developed, we will have less overflow of sewerage into the lake because the rainwater will be held in the basins for a short time. And, um, and it won't be mixed so that there's more than, um, the sewer pipes can hold. And we won't have drainage into the lake, which is the source of our water, of contaminated water. So, I believe very strongly that the programs that the sewer district, uh, is developing are very good for the city. Even though since they're taking away land that I'm currently using for garden, I have to do a lot of extra work to move small trees, to move berry bushes, to move perennial plants. And it's, it's a pain for me. It's a, it's a lot of extra work. But, um, in the long run, it is good for the city because it will help us have clean water. And that's essential. Thank you.
Terry A. Tollfree, one forty-five eleven Terrace Road. One thing I told the, the sewer people was, uh, uh, as I've said here, the United States Constitution, First Amendment, and my picket sign is still there. That's what I told them. I, I keep hearing about, uh, Beachwood, Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, South Euclid, and their water coming here. A former councilman amazed and said there's seven, seven stuff that's gonna be here. Uh, right up there at, I think, just as you pass where the hospital, here our hospital used to be, when they say it's not gonna smell, I, I don't know about all the ins and outs, but I have smelled it before. And from what little bit I'm learning, uh, I don't, uh, I don't want water to come up in my basement. I know I, my house isn't worth one point five million dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, but I don't want the water coming in like it was before the early nineties and bubbling up like crazy under the, under the sink. And I certainly, and I certainly don't wanna be lied to like those folks in Flint, Michigan.
I'm here today for the, um, the special purpose grant. Um, did y'all agree to let it pass without knowing the full price? Because y'all were yaying.
Which special, which special purpose grant?
The one that she's, she was reading about with the state. Did y'all agreed on that that quick? Yes. Okay. And also, um, right. But I'm just saying before, you know, before y'all discuss out here, y'all should have discussed in there. So, when y'all be flipping through papers and stuff, everybody be on one accord. Because it's not looking good, you know? But, y'all getting better, okay? So, you know, just next time y'all go over the things that y'all need to go over and, you know, you work together as a team, okay? And, um, far as, um, salt, uh, we, um, thank God there was no bad winter. But do we have salt case when we do have a bad winter? And, um, the chuck holes is ready. And I know you can't do nothing in the wintertime, but we need to make some plans for it in the summertime to get it built. Because terrace is really a doozy. And then boarding up these banded buildings, that's what it needs to be. Because people going in now, we don't wanna see other bodies in there, you know? And that's, that's, that's throughout the city. So, if, if the city really wanna help us, they should help get boards and start boarding up so it can look kind of decent, you know, until you tear it down. So, that's all I wanna say. Have a good day.
Good evening. Ernest L. Smith, one fifty-four fifty-three Euclid Avenue, and also, uh, one forty-three oh eight Latone, Chairman of OPN. I come here tonight to talk to my sisters and brothers of, of East Cleveland. To remind you all that this is our city. To remind you all that the power structure works for us. How long, sisters and brothers? How long are we just gonna let people come in our city and do what they wanna do? Dump, uh, toxic dumps in our city? Police running over people, talking about, uh, they, uh, they getting out the car, looking like they windshield, but they don't have insurance? Killing our kids, killing our babies? How long? How long are we gonna come in these meetings and they don't even know what they talking about? Sisters and brothers, can you smell it? Can you taste it? Can you feel it? Can you see it, the change? Look at all these unfamiliar faces in these meetings. I see a lot of them, and that's a beautiful thing. I see people on these meetings who said they would never come to a East Cleveland meeting. So, you know what that means? That means change has come. History will be made. Remember this, sisters and brothers, the number twelve. The number twelve. Twelve people short from making history from re, recalling the War Three Councilman, President Weaver. Twelve people from changing the course of history. Do not give up, do not cave in, do not bend your back, stand tall. Most of these people up here running the site and coming in, they don't know nothing about these things. I didn't go talking about paving the streets of the, of the school. They don't know what streets need paved, but they gonna do what they, they gonna do what they, they gonna keep doing what they wanna do and maybe remain silent.
That's right. You got it.
But look around, sisters and brothers. Because it's a new day in East Cleveland. I told them this months ago. It's a new day in East Cleveland. We gonna keep coming to these meetings, and we gonna, uh, we gonna start going to their houses, wherever we need to go, to put pressure on them. Because people need to be in them seats who care about the community, who love the community, who willing to go house to house, children to children, school to school, block to block, precinct to precinct, ward to ward. They don't even teach us about the precincts within, within the ward. And by the way, I am a, uh, executive precinct committee person, War Three D. Time is coming. Thank you.
Dawn Steele, eighteen forty-eight Roseland. I'm here because of my concerns about this, uh, sewer line running from Beachwood. I'm just kinda shocked that, you know, I didn't receive anything in my mailbox telling me anything about what's going on. Then I'm kinda shocked that y'all would even accept something like this. Like this lady said about Flint, Michigan, you don't know what the, uh, bottom line effects is gonna be about this? That's gonna turn into a wetland. That's garbage. And the town, you're on, that's a, I don't, that looks like a hot mess over there. What y'all need to be concentrating on is getting these terrible buildings down and cleaning up this city. Having some white, privileged person seeing they trash down here to affect my black child? I don't like it. And I ain't winning. I don't know where, y'all thought probably what y'all doing, but I thought y'all supposed to be on the side for the kids and the people. Now, I'm glad y'all gonna do this grant for the sidewalk. But my issue is, this sewer water. Don't nobody want nobody else's san, uh, sanitary water coming down here? Unsanitary water, whatever you wanna call it. That's their problem. I didn't tell them to build Beachwood Mall, and I didn't tell them to build Legacy Village. Now, if y'all had some sense down here, we would have a Beachwood Mall and a Legacy Village. To bring some money down there. Where is the development here in this city? I've been here five years, and I'm telling you, every year it gets worse. I don't plan on sticking around, but while I'm here, I'm gonna break my set. I don't even, where's the money? As far as I'm concerned, y'all can get it right together. While we ain't got flower baskets hanging up on our light pole and getting scroll flags saying, welcome to East Cleveland. This place got a bad reputation, and ain't nobody trying to do nothing to fix it. I don't understand the logic and what y'all doing. I don't give damn about nobody nasty water, okay? I don't want it, and my kids certainly don't want it. And for y'all to sit here and agree, where is these people? Where's the diagrams? Where's the pass outs, the handouts? We need to see something. I don't live in War Three, but that don't mean I ain't a part of this. Okay? Right? These people can't, they don't do nothing around there. I need to see proof. I don't care about what this lady on the next street say is gonna be a good thing. Until I see something with my own two eyes, I ain't gonna believe nothing. So, my suggestion is, the next time y'all have a discussion about the N R O S D and Chach and him moving over here and them doing this, y'all need to have some visuals for these people to see. Okay? That's some, some pertinent information. All this back and forth between y'all, well, I need to know this. Y'all should work that out like she said, and back there. Before you got up here in front of me, because it totally looked unprofessional. And like I said, I'm Dawn Steele, and you might be seeing me again. I don't have time.
The girls on one fifty-eight oh eight Terrace Road. I've been hearing a lot of things, but if you all telling people the truth up front, and we are know, the city money is not there. They stramming to make payroll to keep this city going. All of these things that we know we need in this city, they don't have money to do it. They don't have money to run the payroll, I mean, the police department, the fire department, all these things. It takes money. And when the drainages have been on, the citizen moving out. Because every time somebody move out, they ever abandon a house, you're getting less tax base. So, the city's operating on that. Who in the world will come down here and put four or five million dollars in a building down here and expect to get paid? Because anybody that is fool got money, they trying to make more money with it. Now, for that water thing is concerned, what I would like to know from Mr. Weaver is who gave them authorization to do what they doing? Now, this is what we should know, and I'm gonna find out. See, these things y'all should know, just like that lady just said. Y'all should, in the committee meetings, y'all should discuss all of this stuff and know what you're doing when you come here. You know, because you getting up here and nobody know what the heck they doing and saying this free money and this and that and the other. Y'all should, this, all this should have been said before y'all came to council meetings, see? And by you not doing your homework, you know, and I was told by somebody that y'all had up here, I, y'all had two, uh, council and a clerk of council up there. They would do research for people, and they told me personally, both of them. I used to argue with them back and forth, and we had a lot. They said, and I asked them, why in the world don't you all tell these people the truth of what's going on? Well, they said they tell y'all, get up here and vote a different way. Y'all don't go by the experts' knowledge of trying to find out what the thing is. Y'all go on your own and don't know what the heck you doing. And you proved that tonight. Do y'all know how y'all look tonight? It's look very unprofessional. All you have to do, even if you're gonna do something wrong to the people, make them think you doing it right. To find out, y'all don't know what the heck you doing, I'm gonna follow y'all. You know, and I want to do that, answer one question. You telling me that anything that I wanna, we wanna find out, write in and give it to the council, president, I mean, the clerk of council.
Huh? That's not what I said, sorry. That's not what I said.
What did you say?
The form, so you're gonna email us if you're getting information.
I wanna know different things, brother.
And you go, you come to the office and ask? The office is open every day.
Well, you gonna be there?
I'm here every day.
Wait, wait a minute. You notice that? You can ask it right to everybody in here, not just me.
My turn to speak, I'll address it, but you're minister.
That's okay. You address that, please, about this and who gave them authorization to do this. I know if they running, going under the ground.
Well, I can speak, I'll speak, but your time is up.
Yeah, well, you do that, please. I give you my time.
How you doing? Giants Wall, that's seventeen sixty out of there. It seem like a lot of this stuff got to do with money. I don't know exactly the whole, just the very thing, but we did have a hospital here, right? It just disappeared? Hey, I mean, was it sold, was it just tore down, or it was just?
Tax revenue.
It was torn down.
Nothing from it, it's just gone? Oh, we got, how much?
Forty-eight million.
But nobody can count for it.
No account.
Forty-eight million? I'm saying it's forty-eight million. However, millions, period, seem like that would help these cleaner, period. I ain't gonna, that's, that's basically it. There's a lot of money out there that's floating that ain't accounted for, that's all.
Good evening, City Council. My name is David Rack, I say eighteen sixteen eight. Um, I've been a resident of East Cleveland since nineteen seventy-six. I went to Mayfair, I went to Kirk, and also went to Shaw High School, class of eighty-nine. Um, I raised six children in this city. I even bought a house in this city. Um, at this point in time, it's to the point where I'm ready to tell my wife, look, we gonna sell this, or we just gonna let it go and just move out this city. Um, it's just too much going on. There's nothing going on, to tell you the truth. Nothing going on. On the top of my street is just like a chuck hole. My whole street is home owners, homeowners. People on my street been standing on that street for twenty-five, thirty years, and we have chuck holes. I'm talking about chuck hole, potholes on the top of our street. Where's the money to fix this? There is none. Um, this city was a beautiful city when I was growing up, a beautiful city. I mean, my cousins, they grew up on a hundred and five down the way, and they would call every weekend to come up here to East Cleveland because this was the place to be. Oh, my God, y'all stay in East Cleveland? How much money y'all got? Now, I have my own delivery company. I use my mother's address when I'm getting business, because I don't want people to know I stay in East Cleveland because of the, of the light that's here over our city. As far as that, uh, the, the sewer line, please don't vote that in here, please don't. Because if you do that, nobody, there's nobody's gonna come down here. First thing they gonna hear is that toxic. One, because we don't know anything. You guys don't keep us informed. You know, just as black people, you know, as black people, it's hard for us to be informed, to get informed, or to wanna be informed. So, I mean, once you hear the, the toxic, that's all I keep hearing, it's gonna be toxic, it's gonna be toxic, it's gonna be toxic. I don't want that in here. And if I'm hearing that, I know outside developers are gonna hear that too. What we gonna wanna come here for? I mean, for real. I mean, it really is a bad scene where a city is ran top to bottom African American. I'm talking about from the mayor, the city council president, vice city council president, chief of police, law director, all black. All black. When I go and talk to my white friends, I mean, it's, it's like a buffoon. I mean, that's what they really look at. As we are buffoons, and we can't get anything done. So, like I said, when it comes to that, the toxic or the sewer line, let that step to Beachwood. We got our own problem. They got their problems up there, let them handle that. They never came to, I never heard Beachwood talking about coming down here fixing a, a pothole, fixing a street light, helping with the school. They just, but I think they closing down Prospect because everybody's moving out. If you bring that toxic in here, nobody's gonna come here. Thank you. Thank you.